All right, if we could come to order. A special session of Rochester City Council, May the 17th, is open and we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a...
What is the actual number of this one?
Special...
Zero three?
Special session tonight to review an act on ordinance number 03-2016, amendment to the building code for workmanship for the downtown historical corridor. I'd like to start out by asking for a motion to have the first reading of the ordinance.
Make a motion that we read ordinance number 3-2016 by title only.
Second. Those in favor? Those opposed?
Which one are you reading?
Yeah, which one are you reading?
They're both the same right now.
You want to read that title?
Ordin-- yeah, title first.
Okay.
Ordinance number 3-2016 and ordinance amending portions of the building code concerning workmanship. These are the official.
Any discussion? Let's open it up for discussion. Yeah. So, you want to have the second reading in its entirety?
Which one?
That's the thing.
I feel like we need to have a discussion before we have another reading.
Okay, yeah. Since there are more than one version, we open it up for discussion?
My discussion on the versions is, there's only one of them which only includes historical district, where you can get the extra grants, and that should be the one we do use. Anything outside, we can't, we shouldn't include it if they can't get the grant money.
With Mason, I think just the main street is the idea that we're looking for.
Fourth to ninth, historical district.
Yes.
It closes at fourth, not third?
Fourth. Fourth. Third's outside of the historical district, so they can't get grant money.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That makes sense.
Also, opening it up any farther than that is not what the original intent of the designation of the corridor was all about either, is my opinion of it.
So, based on that, Mason, the same would hold true for Madison, because it, for two blocks, then it goes to center line, Madison Street, but on the Jefferson side, it stops at the alley. You guys agree? I know we read something last week that said center line to center line.
I think that was the...
That was tax abatement.
Tax abatement.
Tax abatement, yeah.
Are those included in the corridor or the historical downtown definition?
Based on what was emailed to us, whatever day that was, I don't know. That's where the line is drawn for the historical district. It does not include telephone company building. But our block of between Maine and Madison and the next block over goes to the center line of Madison Street, not an alleyway. So, our building is in the historical district.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think, I would think we'd want to mirror that. If this were to happen, it should mirror...
It needs to mirror, yes, the places they can get grant money.
And I think those were included because they're buildings along Madison Street corridor that are considered historic. And there's nothing on the west side of Maine, once you get past Main Street. Or I guess, once you get past that center line of the alley.
Of the alley, yes, okay.
And that's, we're all talking about your areas of visibility downtown, your Main Street historical area. I think we should have a reading of the thing before doing anything.
Yeah, I think we need to read it, so they know exactly what...
That makes sense.
We have a motion?
Motion to read ordinance 03-2016 in its entirety.
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. Sir, would you do the duty?
Ordinance number 3-2016 and ordinance amending portions of the building code concerning workmanship. Whereas the common council of the city of Rochester has determined that certain portions of the city's building regulations should be amended to regulate the aesthetic value of property within the historic downtown commercial corridor. Whereas the common council acknowledges statistics proving a direct correlation between aesthetics and economic vitality of a city. Whereas the common council supports the initiatives of organizations within the city of Rochester focused on the revitalization of the downtown historic commercial corridor. Whereas the common council recognizes the importance of the legislative body extending support to positive initiatives within the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Rochester that the ordinance of the city of Rochester are hereby amended as follows. 150.024 Workmanship and Demolition. A, all work on the construction, alteration, and repair of buildings and other structures shall be performed in a good and workmanlike manner according to accepted standards and practices in the trade. B, the regulations set forth in this paragraph and its sub-paragraphs apply to the following geographic locations, corridor, the section of Main Street that extends north and south from 4th Street to 9th Street, encompassing the area east and west of Main Street, ending at the north-south alley, lying mid-block between Maine and Madison, as well as Maine and Jefferson, all extending from 4th Street to 9th Street, also including the entire block situated between 7th and 8th Street, between Madison Street and Main Street, as well as the entire courthouse square. One, brick and/or ornamental decorative masonry material will be used for all new exterior wall reconstruction and construction for any building or structure visible from any alley or street. All materials must be conducive to the historical intent of the corridor as defined by the city of Rochester common council. No other construction material is allowed. Two, historically ornamental elements, including awnings, cornices, column, mullion, parapet, pediment, window hood, etc., may be repaired and replaced by using the original construction material or a material with the historically similar texture, color, appearance, and style in order to maintain historical compatibility within the corridor. Three, historic buildings, structures, and sites shall be maintained to meet the applicable requirements established under seat of Rochester and Indiana State statute for buildings generally so as to prevent the loss of historic material and the deterioration of important character-defining details and features. Four, nothing in this section shall be construed as to prevent the ordinary repairs and maintenance of any building, structure, or site, provided that such repairs or maintenance do not result in a conspicuous change in the design, form, proportion, mass, configuration, building material, texture, color, location, or external visual appearance of any structure or part thereof. Five, any pitched roof visible from a street or alley will be constructed from roofing material consisting of one color and will be neutral in shade. All materials and colors must be conducive to the historical intent of the corridor as defined by the Rochester common council. Six, any property owner or other interested party desiring changes in the exterior appearance of buildings or structures within the corridor, subject to view from a public way by additions, reconstruction, alteration, and or maintenance, including the involvement of exterior color change, shall apply for a city of Rochester building permit prior to making such changes. Said building permit application may require sketches, drawings, photographs, descriptions, or other information to be submitted to the office of the building commissioner. If an applicant is denied a permit or believes that one of these guidelines is unduly restrictive, not in keeping with the historicity of the applicant's building, or otherwise should not be required for the applicant's project, the applicant may request that the Rochester common council grant the applicant a variance from the particular guideline. C, all demolition debris, rubbish shall be completely removed and disposed of in a legal and proper manner within 14 days of the start of the demolition process. Where a demolition permit is required, all demolition sites will have some type of barrier to signify to the public that a hazard exists, rope, tape, fencing, etc., which will completely enclose, surround the worksite. Where a demolition permit is required, any demolition site opened for more than five days must have construction barricades as defined by the Indiana Department of Homeland Security and not to be less than six feet in height. All demolition sites will be completely backfilled with suitable material, grated, and seated with a vegetative cover within 30 days of start of demolition. Any building demolished in a commercial industrial district will be completed by a contractor that is legally bonded and insured. D, if any person, firm, or corporation shall violate any of the provisions of this subsection, do any act prohibited herein or fail to perform any duty lawfully enjoined within the time prescribed by the building commissioner, or shall fail, neglect, or refuse to obey any lawful order given by the building commissioner in connection with the provisions of this code, for each such violation, failure, or refusal, such person, firm, or corporation shall be fined $250. Each day of such unlawful activity shall constitute a separate offense.
Any comments from the council? Okay, I'd like to open it up for comments from the floor. I would ask, you stand to make a comment, please identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Steve Craft, and I'm interested in building downtown. Your ordinance would be hindering me to help the community have a better place instead of another closed down building. I think you really should look at the situation base by base or maybe give a little bit more leeway. I came in this town with 86 cents to my name, and I'm trying to stay here the rest of my life and have my grandkids come here. And what you're telling me today is, I probably can't afford this building that I'm looking at because of the condition. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else like to speak? Ruth?
Yeah, Ruth Gunter. I, we just redid the Evergreen, and we looked into the historic redoing of the Evergreen. And I actually had an architect tell me that people that historically maintain their places the proper way, and to actually get the money, the grant money that's there, generally it's a tax write-off. Don't even bother, it is not worth your time, because unless you have that much money to do it all the right way, no money will be given to you. And I was emailed a, I don't know, 80-some page thing from the historic guy down in Indy, of different examples as to what is paid for, what is not paid for. There was somebody that redid absolutely everything to their building, and in one office area above the exit door, they did not repair the, the broken plaster. They got no money from the historic place, because they did not finish the project, 100%. So, it's all fine and dandy, but when you're looking at an extra $30,000 to do the windows the proper way, are you guys going to help us get that money and find that money and do it in a timely manner so that you can open your business or continue with your business? I mean, I did research it, and like I said, the architect told me it's not worth a person's time or energy unless they're just looking at a way to throw your money away. So, that's something to take in consideration.
Let me play devil's advocate, Ruth. What if someone came into town and right across the street from you, they build a Quonset hut, like we used to bivouac in in the army back in the days or whatever, and started some kind of a store? Would that upset you with your business uptown?
Well, is it what their business is doing? I've got to tell you, you know, I had mixed reviews when they put that nice red, white, and blue roof on there, and we were upstairs gutting the upstairs of the building, so it was very obvious to us, oh my God, the red, white, and blue, it looks like a freaking circus. But after they got it done, and I'm talking as soon as they got it done, I did have to admit that, you know what, it goes in very nice with the gas station that's right beside it. The average person probably won't notice it, and the only reason we noticed it is because it was a change. But it is who they are, and in all reality, who am I to sit there and tell them that they didn't have the right to do that when they wanted to make it stand? And it doesn't look bad, you know, and it is who they are. So, I can't condemn that as a person. And if that business across the street is bringing in business, then am I too upset that I've got a few more people eating in my restaurant because of them?
My point being, the only thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, the only thing we have ordinance-wise that controls what is built downtown is structure, structurally, right?
Fire, the other fire lines.
Yeah. It's pretty wide open, and that, I don't know if that's something of consideration for building owners too. I know it is for a couple who aren't here tonight, that if they put the monies in to do something, they don't want that Quonset hut right next to their building. Right now, like I say, we have no way of preventing that.
Personally, I'm not one to normally say I'm for telling an owner, someone, what guidelines there are. But looking at their downtown revitalization plans and the potential we have to really help bring more people to your buildings, whether you own the business that's there, whether you lease it to another business where they'll be more profitable, you know, I think we have a great opportunity to do this, and a lot of excitement behind it. This room was five times as full as this for that meeting. Everyone, I was nervous because I thought there'd be a lot of back and forth. Everyone is for it. And what I'm afraid of is if we spend taxpayer money to help bring more business to your buildings, and some may go a different way and hurt the overall success of this program. I mean, if everyone's completely against the ordinance and everything, that's great. We won't do it, in my mind, we won't do it. But we're given a great opportunity to spend other, you know, spend taxpayers' money to help the downtown district, the buildings you own.
And actually, this ordinance wasn't just concocted here, it was predicated on a couple other ordinances from other communities. One was North Manchester, and the other one was Wabash.
And I can say this, Ruth, I completely understand where you're coming from, and I can see both sides. We actually just, Sarah and I had the honor of actually going to Wabash today. And oddly enough, as we were having a discussion about rural housing, is why we were there, to discuss that, the gentleman that was doing planning, he was now with the state, he was actually there, and because I knew I was preparing for this and trying to weigh both sides and what my brain actually wanted to decide what to believe. And I asked him, you know, if he had had any issues when they did the forward progress with Wabash, and he had stated, you know what, Amy, it was pretty rough at first because of some of the similar things that folks are speaking about at the moment. And a lot of those similar arguments were brought to the table. But, and Sarah, you're vouched for this, he said that though it was a rough start and a bit of a rocky journey, it really did turn out like Mason was speaking about, it did turn out to ultimately produce value. It was, like I said, a rough kind of start and a bit of a rocky journey, but once they worked the details out, it actually produced more value. And if we, you know, understand correctly, Wabash has not only received the stellar designation, which is a lot more money for the downtown, but also just the national resignation, or the certification that they received. So, they've got two things that we haven't even touched. So, my thought process has to be, if we make some, if these gentlemen up here make some of those difficult decisions, which I go back and forth on because I don't want building owners or business owners to suffer, but I can see the long-range success, and actually sat with someone today who actually told me that it was successful. So, I mean, it's going to be difficult and it's hard, but if we don't make hard decisions, how do we move forward, you know?
And correct me if I'm wrong here, if you would have brought, your building looks great. You guys did a wonderful job. If you brought us those plans, just because it wasn't entirely historical renovation, that doesn't mean we would have said no.
Oh, that's absolutely right.
Your building would have been approved, in my mind.
At the time, nobody told me I can go to the city and get anything. It was go to the state, and the state will tell you that.
Well, I guess...
I just don't want you thinking that because your windows aren't, you know, the historical renovation, that it wouldn't have been approved.
Yeah, I guess this kind of, there might be, everyone in here might be coming from a different perspective. Really, where the city's at now, we have no, I guess, controls in place for how the downtown aesthetics look. And right now, if someone wanted to come in and put in, you know, a rainbow row-looking house that you see in South Carolina, bright pink, you know, doesn't fit into the overall look of the downtown, we have nothing in place currently that we can stop anybody from doing it. And, you know, I, my goal, I guess, with this ordinance isn't to set up a grant program, where it's to the nail, to the paint color, set you up for a historical grant. That's not, I guess, my intent behind any of this. And I don't have a dog in the fight, you know, I don't own a building downtown, I just live here, you know, and I guess my role is to care about the current business owners, but also to protect the long-term look of this town 50, 75 years down the road. And, you know, to me, I'd like to find a happy medium where we can control the aesthetics, or at least not have something, an albatross come in that could negatively impact all the downtown businesses. Or set up a trend where every building looks different, if we truly want to continue with quote-unquote "a historical downtown." But, you know, it's good that we have everyone here, you know, I want to hear everyone's opinion, good, bad, or indifferent, you know, because that's what we need is input from the business owners. Mr. Craft, you know...
I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
Have the city council inspected any of our downtown buildings?
Not interior, no.
Exterior. Have you actually physically looked at some of these buildings? Because I've worked on a couple of them, and if it wasn't for the homeowners or the business owner to do what they did, you would have had another building down on the ground.
Absolutely.
Would have had a disaster. I've worked on a place that people called it a drug house. It's a beautiful place. I get compliments on this particular building every day, and it's been there for a while. And I'm just asking the council to really look at, not a homeowner association, I know you'd want control to bring in more businesses, because I want to grow here. This is the place I want to live and die, and I'm an Arizona boy. So, I take a lot of pride in this town. I applaud what the city's done. I applaud Mayor Denton on the great work that we had from with the sidewalk in town, and things are going the right way. I'm just asking you guys really look at some of the things that, like myself, trying to better myself in this town, trying to put a business, put some more taxpayer dollars in. Kind of look at what I'm seeing as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a question then with this. Basically, if I understand this right, it's also the building on 9th Street from the fire, the big deal is, is that if that person doesn't have enough money to do any more than just put siding up, metal siding. And in order to keep it historic, brick is the solution. So, if this got passed, then he would have to put brick up, but he really doesn't have that extra $5,000. So then, what would this help for him to get that extra $5,000 to put the brick up? I mean, point blank, because it comes...
To best of my knowledge, I don't know what his financial situation is.
And that I know of, I don't know, would you want to spend an extra $5,000 just to steady your building, if it's good enough, you know? And would you want to be forced?
For me?
Yeah, would you want that?
Yes.
You would, you want to be forced to spend that extra $5,000?
Well, I prefer you not put words in my mouth. I wouldn't consider it forced, I would consider it my duty as a downtown business owner. You know, I'm not forced to do certain repairs to my house, but I invest in that property to make it aesthetically nice for, you know, not only me and safe, but also to fit in with my neighborhood. You know, if it's downtown, you know, I would put up brick, if that's, if the building itself is brick, if it's a brick building, I would want to put brick in, personally.
The kitchen to my restaurant, some people say it looks like, looks pretty bad. We should have probably tore it down, but we put a bunch of extra cement and everything in it and kind of cobbled it, but it's sturdier than it's ever been in probably 30 or 40 years. Personally, I like the back of the building, and there's been a lot of people that say it's a great place to take pictures.
I liked the back, I liked what you've done with that building.
Well, the back of it, you know, but at the same time, there's still that conversation as to what in the world are we going to cover that with? And no matter what, there is no answer that makes it look good or aesthetic to any building downtown. You know, so it's not just about, you know, what you can do. I don't think anybody puts anything up, do they, just to be gaudy and ugly? I mean, anybody that owns anything has to take in consideration what they can afford. What I'm asking is, it'd be nice to be able to afford it, but if I can't, then is there a solution? Or is it just up to me to be able to afford it? You know, whereas five years ago, when I, you know, if I built a building five years ago, and this was my concept five years ago, all of a sudden, now that I'm ready to do it, and I didn't have knowledge of this right here, and then I'm knocked down, and now I've got to come up with an extra $10,000 I didn't know about. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think with, I mean, you don't get, like, if you went to Casey's office, she would probably deny, if this were passed, she would deny your plans, but then you'd have a chance to come. And I would think, you know, if it happens five years down the road, whoever's on the council at that time would probably want to work with that downtown business owner. You know, the last thing we want to do is put someone out. But, you know, do you understand also where we're coming from on this?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a delicate situation, because now we have no standards. Do you think we should have some standards?
Yeah.
What do you think those should be?
I don't know.
Harry?
There are two.
Harry, would you identify yourself?
Couple of, yeah, Harry Webb, a couple options too. Rochester Downtown Partnership has just recently put out a facade program. You know, we are offering $5,000 grants. Certainly, a corner of 9th and Maine would probably qualify for a facade enhancement grant if it applied. So, there's that money. There's also Fedco loan money to people who can't afford it. There's a loan committee that, you know, can loan out money for things like this, for improving infrastructure. So, there are some resources that we have that can offer building owners, especially if they're using it to follow the guidelines that are required to maintain a business in the downtown.
Yes, you're right, there are some programs. Sarah, identify yourself.
Sarah Reese, I am the president of the Rochester Downtown Partnership, which is our Indiana Main Street program here in Rochester. And as the president, I've been asked by our board of directors to speak in support of this proposed ordinance for downtown Rochester. We are an alliance of community members focused on creating a positive atmosphere for the city of Rochester, to stimulate economic development, enhance the quality of life, promote a center of activity, and support the preservation of downtown Rochester. As such, we feel this ordinance is vital to continuing to move Rochester forward in a cohesive direction. The RDP recently rolled out a facade grant program, as Harry mentioned, to business and building owners within our focus area, which very closely mirrors the area that is being discussed here, to provide funds for the renovation and restoration of facades in downtown. Part of this program includes design guidelines that maintain the historical integrity of our downtown district. We find it utmost important... We find it of utmost importance that the business and building owners who are taking advantage of this program have the security of knowing their neighboring businesses will be held to the same design standards. This ordinance is a crucial first step in providing that knowledge. The Rochester Downtown Partnership strongly encourages the Rochester City Council to adopt this new ordinance in order to preserve the historic nature of our downtown. Um, in addition to that, as you mentioned, a lot of times those federal funds that are spoken out, that are available for historic districts are really hard to get. Um, there's a huge pool of people who are going after those funds. There are some very strict guidelines to obtain those funds. But on a local level, the downtown partnership, once we have our five oh one C three status, has some ability for grant monies to us that would be done, given back to our community. Um, and so those local fund opportunities, even the facade grant program which is currently available, um, are opportunities that we feel business and building owners in the community can more readily obtain. But in order to offer that, we want to ensure that we're moving Rochester in that cohesive direction, in, in the same direction, so that we're not having, you know, a fluorescent pink polka dotted building. I mean, it sounds far-fetched and it sounds ridiculous, but you never know. You never know what somebody's gonna try to do. And we have, um, a downtown that does have that historic designation. And as a group, we wanna maintain that.
I'm just curious, the crowd tonight and, uh, how many building owners do we have here?
In, in the historic region?
Yeah, historic region, Hanson.
I think that gentleman had a question.
Yeah, Jeff Johnson. Um, I actually had the Quonson Hut that you're referring to. Um, that building on Fifth and Main, the old, uh, I think it's previous building one time. But we redid that, Steve and I did, two, three years ago. And I kinda go along with Ruth said. I mean, to bring that back to historical, um, quality, it, there's no way it'd be cost efficient. I mean, that building was literally falling down. I mean, the bricks, we had three layers of bricks and you could just, they, they crumble in your hands. So to try to repair the, if, if it came down to the point where there, I had to repair the bricks, I probably wouldn't have took that project on. Because it's, uh, you know, we spent, I think, we concentrate mainly on the electric, plumbing, you know, the infrastructure, the roof, foundation. And then to get to the point where you're dealing with these, uh, you know, the, the exterior that's just crumbling, um, that our only really, you know, practical solution was to put the metal up. Cause that metal's pretty much holding that building together. I, I mean, I think without the metal, you know, it, uh, you know, we could have repaired it. It would have cost thousands and thousands. And then I really don't think it would, uh, look right. The new brick mixed with the old brick. And, uh, I, you know, I, I, I know it's gotta be a set of guidelines, but I, I think a building like mine could be, as an example, you get one in such poor condition. I mean, I would think that you guys would be a little, you know, lenient with that particular, you know, something in that, you know, says poor condition.
Yeah, and you did the building right across from Beacon, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and they did a marvelous job on that building. I had a bird's eye view to that building for, cause my office at the, at the time at the credit union faced that building for five years.
It's dogged.
So, yeah, I had a, every day, you know.
Oh, you seen the mess and you seen what came out of that building.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, and what you guys have done to that building looks great.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have done an amazing job with that structure.
And I know it don't fall within historical.
Yeah.
What you guys are looking for, but when, you know, to be cost efficient.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, cause I mean, you, you were right. At that building at that point was either demolish it.
Right.
I mean, I think the city even had to board the windows up at one point before it was bought.
I think it's ready to be in debt.
Yeah, it was close. It wa- it was on our radar at that point.
Right.
Um, you know, and I, I think that is something the council would also consider. You know, those type of projects that are, you know.
So it'd be case by case then. Right, it, it, there's not an absolute. That's why the, the section's in there about the review of the council. If it doesn't, you know, automatically fit, this is historical, then it has to come before the council and be, be reviewed.
It might have been all in favor if someone wanted to take that project on.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, that building.
I would have too. But now, there's no review for anything. That Quonset Hut I keep referring to could show up any day. And, uh, those of you who have invested monies in redoing things could have that as a neighbor. And it might not be the best neighbor to have. And there's no control in the city to keep that from happening. And these other towns we referred to, they realize that a lot earlier than we have, that you have to have something like that in place.
Another question, um, that our other building, uh, Tidewater. It's the, um, the side is cinder block. So when we go to redo that, being as how it is cinder block, I mean, what, what do we do? Yeah, I wasn't gonna put metal up until, you know, all this started. I mean, is that something like the side?
Is that the front or the back of that?
This is the, uh.
The back bank?
No, the side.
The, it's the back side facing the alley and, uh, Eighth Street.
The side.
No, the side it faces, um.
Seventh Street.
Cook, the old Cook building?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's facing. It's all faces north. It's just a big, uh.
But off the back of the building?
Faces north, the side of the building.
Yes, the side.
Oh, cause it's on the out, is on?
It'd be right behind Nikki's, Nikki's beauty shop. But it's just a big, and it's cracked in several ways and these repaired. And if we tried to, you know, stucco or facade or, you know, whatever, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna crack again. You know, I'd like to put metal around the whole side. But, you know, since it is cinder block, I mean, that's not really historical.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, something like that, I'm the guy curious.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be the discussion then for a, a variance or deviation for that situation. Yeah. Uh, my opinion, and I'm, I'm not a council member, it was just an opinion. I would think the council would be agreeable to work with somebody who were, who was working in that manner to, to make something structurally better, but also pleasing to the eye. Came forward with something psychedelic or out of this world that's gonna, you know, what we're talking about. Somebody drives down Main Street from out of town. Uh, yeah, you want every one of your store owners to be noticed and, but you don't want somebody that be noticed. You know, something out of, uh, doesn't fit, doesn't fit in the climate of the downtown.
I mean, everyone being the owners here, you all want the same thing. You want your building to look good, but you want it to be affordable. As a council, I think, you know, we realize that. We realize some of this stuff is very expensive. Um, so if we were to pass this, you know, it may seem a little strict, but by doing so, we can be probably a little more lenient when it comes to, you know, if you come to us and say, well, you know, we need like the north side of that building. It's already block. Can we get it metal? You know, we'll, we'll look at it and, you know, if you're trying to make it better and as long as you're making it look good, I think that's what we really care about. And this is just a set of guidelines to make sure that we're all looking in the same direction. This isn't an absolute. This isn't saying if it's not brick and, you know, it's not gonna be passed. That's, that's not what we're looking for. It's just a means to get to where we both wanna go.
I, I think there's an assumption made by this group that anybody who buys a building downtown and wants to do something with it is not only interested in their building, they're interested in the whole downtown. Because now they're joining that group of buildings. And that's all we're saying. We wanna make sure that everybody who is involved with owning property downtown is, are gonna be happy with their neighbors and what's going on in the rest of that area. And, and, uh, this group certainly doesn't wanna tell people how to do that, but we wanna work with them and make sure that everything comes out in that manner and everybody is happy with how the downtown looks. That's our, that's our face to the world. We wanna make sure we're putting our best face on. I'm sorry.
And then the gentleman up here.
Gentleman here?
Him and him. So either one, who wants to go first?
Go first.
Barry Baldwin, Baltimore County. Um, I, I applaud what you're trying to do. I'm all for historic preservation and I, I love Rochester's downtown. I think it has a lot of potential. It's not quite there yet, but it's, it is a great downtown. And I would not be one who would wanna see the pink polka dotted thing come in. So on the one hand, I, I do support what you're trying to do. But on the other side of it, I just have a couple issues and I would just leave out there as questions for thought. Uh, one would be, you know, you guys, I, I would believe your intentions. I think I would trust where you're coming from and what you wanna do. I think I understand that. But playing the devil's advocate, let's say ten years from now, you guys aren't here. We have new people in here. These ordinances are on the books and they are written in stone. And you get people in here that's gonna take a literal interpretation of this. That could be a problem. And I say this because I've done business in another city for a long time and this happens time to time again. You also have situations where you have what I would call personality conflicts between me and you and, you know, there's problems there. So I guess my, my point would be, um, if you come across too restrictive out of the gate on paper, I mean, you can, you can say one thing and I believe you, but what's on paper is what's law. So if it's too restrictive right out of the gate and I'm a potential business owner, building buyer coming into Rochester, I'm gonna look at these things and like, man, if I don't have the money, that could, that could put me out of business right away. If I feel that, uh, local government and ordinances are too restrictive, that might hinder me from coming here. Um, and another thing, and, and I know this is kind of the catch twenty few thing. I know you have to have it, but on the other side of it, I just, I see this hurting so many people's this panic penalty situation, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a day. Uh, you know, I guess on the one hand, if, if a person, like in my business, if a person doesn't have the money to pay their taxes, how are they gonna have money to pay the penalty? So if, if I can't afford to do what needs to be done, my building's falling down, I've got to do something, even if it doesn't comply with ordinances. I'm gonna get fined two hundred and fifty dollars a day for this. And these are all questions. I don't know. I just wanna make sure there's a clear understanding between you guys and, and us here on what you're doing. But, uh, in theory, I agree with what you're doing. I, I do. I think there has to be some standards and, you know, that's, I'm just saying, watch, watch your wording on the ordinances, I guess, cause you may not be there and someone else could take a different.
Absolutely.
I worry about the individual taste of somebody wanting to come downtown, you know, to, uh, to open another business. And I don't know what type of business to say they wanna open a hat shop. And, you know, and they, they wanna do it more of an upbeat, uh, modern appeal to the young. And then we're gonna say, you know, I don't know, you gotta stay with these colors and, uh, you gotta have the brick on the front. We can't do anything, you know, is that, and so that could push, as, as the gentleman just said, you know, that could push somebody right out of town also. I have a, you know, I was just a small business and I've been in all my life and I'd have a real hard time when somebody come into my building and say, oh, John, you know, you can't do this. Believe me, they'd have their hands full. Um, I never was really too concerned about what the other buildings in my community were li- what, what they were doing, what they were like, or what color they were, how much glass they had in the front windows, as long as they're nice buildings and the people were, were there. And I was worried about how my building was maintained and what I was doing. So I had business, uh, you know, I can't worry about everybody else making money. I wanna make some money. And, uh, I just, I would hate to put any limitations on anybody downtown. That's the way I kinda feel about it. I'd hate to put limitations on somebody that could bring in something totally new. That'd be a great idea and then we have a restriction that says, you've gotta blend in. I, I think that hurts the individual taste of city.
But I think you have to look at, I just keep thinking, what about these other places?
Amy, would you do me a favor and identify yourself? Yeah, you didn't the first time.
Amy, I'm counting on you.
Thank you.
Um, I just keep thinking about the other places that have done this. You mentioned Wabash. How many of, we haven't actually asked the specific questions of, did it prohibit business or did it help? I'm assuming it helped because they have a more thriving downtown business than we do. And I guess I haven't looked to see if there's a hat shop that's out of question, that's insane downtown Wabash. But that's what keeps rolling around in my head is some of these questions from business owners. Maybe being able to ask some of the other places that have done this and have actually been successful. So we're not the first one. We're not the pioneer folks who have pioneered this idea. So if it's successful in other places, um, I would assume there's something that would produce success from it, from a cohesive plan and a GPS coordinates that you can direct folks to. But with some leniency, like Mark was speaking about, you're not, from what I understand, you're not stating that if there's a specific circumstance that's prohibitory, that they can't come to y'all.
Yeah.
But.
You know, what, what we don't want is to be so restrictive that no one wants to do anything with the building.
Yeah.
You know, the last thing we wanna do is have crumbling buildings downtown. And, and really, a lot of these buildings, like Mr. Johnson had said, they're getting to that age. Some of them are a hundred years old or older. And, you know, they're at that tipping point where you let them sit and crumble. I mean, the Bailey's building's a, a good example. Right now, a hole, well, kind of a hole in the back of the building. A layer of bricks is, is missing.
You wanna have a strategy. You wanna have some sort of guiding principles, what you're really kind of, from what I understand.
Yeah, we want, we want, we don't wanna make it so restrictive where business owners can't maintain their property.
Well, I think, John, one thing that's very important to remember on this ordinance.
Identify yourself.
Sorry. One thing they keep in mind is with the ordinance, a lot of it has to do with maintenance. Um, the city does not have any kind of maintenance ordinance right now, as books, which is why I know Ruth, you had mentioned, um, you know, Ninth and Main. Yes, that, that's a very obvious concern because Ruth and Ma- Ninth and Main is right there. It's kinda like the Allegiant's roof. Everybody sees it. You see it when you come into town, you see it when you go out of town. Um, but it's the little buildings that people don't recognize, you know? Steve had asked, has anybody gone and seen the buildings? I have. I've seen them inside, I've seen them outside. You know, you have the old chicken coop, Alejandro's. You have, um, you know, the face coming off the old Cobbler's Corner. You have the back of the Bailey's building. You have Ninth and Main. You have, you know, multiple different buildings that if you look on the alley side, you know, or you look on the side of it, you can see where that brick is tuck pointing. The front of Rochester Orthopedics. If you go and you look at that, there is tuck pointing that needs to be done of the old Rochester Orthopedic building. And if it doesn't happen, then it's gonna look like the chicken coop. And the chicken coop has cracks from the roof all the way to the foundation. And when it starts coming through, you, that's a serious problem. And what the city's going to have to face is there isn't some kind of code that goes on the books for maintenance and for the ability of, you know, the requirement, I'll say, for owners to maintain the building. They need to maintain it. And yes, metal is a very, very, you know, affordable way of fixing it. But I just need, how many buildings? Five? So is that what the city wants? Or does the city council wanna look at them and say, okay, business owner, we'd love to work with you. Get creative. You know, get creative with different materials. You know, you're intelligent people. You know, you own a business, you're profitable in it. Get creative. You know, Barry, what they're doing with the B and B building, you know, from what he's told me, is absolutely amazing. You know, and it will be when they walk into it. I mean, they're very creative people, what they're doing on the inside. And it may not be the same as what's in your building. It may be the hat shop. You just never know. And if somebody wants to come in and do a hat shop, there's nothing that precludes them from putting decorative ornaments on those buildings. Um, there's nothing that precludes them for signage, you know, and, and awnings. Doesn't say anything about the awning. And I mean, they could put up an awning that looks like a top hat if they wanted to. These are, you know, they can get creative with all of that. What this is saying is, you have a building, you may be making money in this community, but you need to put that money back into the community. but you need to put that money back into the community. And you need to maintain the building so that we don't have missing teeth all over our downtown. Because you were head of business and you were making money off of this community, but you didn't want to put the money into the walls. So once you made your money and the building was too bad, you moved down to a different spot. And the city, through the unsafe building code, had to condemn it. And now the taxpayers who live here have to pay to take the building down. That's what I continually see in my position. And that's something, and that's one of the reasons why just about every year for the last few years, I have come to you and said, this is a serious concern. There's some type of ordinance that I really believe you should put on the books.
Harry Webb?
I just want to echo the RDP's support and, you know, just the general perception of congratulating council for considering this ordinance because, you know, the aesthetic look of our downtown is, you know, is really nice and could be a lot better. And hopefully someday it will be. But it's, by doing nothing, it's going to continue to deteriorate. And as a retailer who's rented space in malls and stuff, this is nothing, you know, everybody wants a nice look and feel, and that's what we're trying to protect. It's a general definition of materials to be used. It's not saying really what you need to do with your building. You go into a mall or you go up on Grape Road or any strip mall, you go down here to the Walmart Plaza or the Big Art Plaza, whatever that is, you're extremely restricted what you can do with the face of that building. You know, you can do certain signage and certain things in your windows, but they are trying to maintain the look and feel of their thing, just like we're trying to maintain the look and feel of our downtown. And I appreciate the fact that there's an appeal process. I think we're all trying to go in the same direction, but I don't think we have to overthink it here in that we're just trying to define the materials and hopefully prevent major blemishes and work with the building owners that have buildings that are in severe disrepair to find a solution that's going to work. And I appreciate your consideration of this ordinance.
Do you still want to start a comment you want to make in the very back? Okay. I didn't want to skip over you if you did.
I have one more comment.
Yeah?
You guys are talking downtown and I applaud you. But there's a whole community, there's businesses that are not downtown. And if you drive in this town like I did in 2000, I looked at the town. I didn't look at just downtown. I drove up and down the streets. I chose to live here for this long. And you're looking at just downtown. I think if you're going to Megan Ordinance, you should make it for all businesses and look at all businesses. There are some businesses that should be tore down that's not in downtown. It's a sore eye. I don't think just the downtown. I applaud what you're trying to do. I honestly do. It scares me a little bit because I'm trying to start a business here on a shoestring budget. But I can play if I know the game, but am I going to go outside to downtown and open my business now? Because it'd be cheaper. But if I had all the eggs in the same basket and looked from an outsider's point of view, I looked at all of Rochester. I looked at the parks. I looked at the schools. I looked at what this community had for me. I applaud Harry Webb, Mr. Johnson, for making beautiful buildings downtown. That's why I like this place. So I think there's some other businesses in town that should fall under this category that Casey Cole's trying to, because I know she's looked at some of these buildings. So I think maybe the council should look at not just downtown for this ordinance. Maybe it should be some other, for all businesses, because like Harry Webb said, Triangle over to Peachtree, they have restrictions.
Steve, it's well said. Well said. Appreciate your comments. This is a journey and we haven't started the first step of the journey. This is a first step process. But you're absolutely right. If your community's going to move forward and progress, you have to consider the whole community. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Linda Baldwin, his wife.
His wife? Okay, Linda.
I just think sometimes people think because you're buying a business or because you're buying a building, you have money. And usually it's those people that need the money the worst because you have everything inside to do and staff to provide for and yada, 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 lots of, everything that you see inside and, you know, maybe roofing and, you know, all of that. So I think it would, for me personally, I think that there's just a fine line that you guys, yes, you have to be somewhat judgmental. I'm not sure we can approve this, you know, and maybe critique those people. But also, if you, if you're not careful, I think you will restrict businesses from coming. And I know that commercial business is very hard to buy with banks. So you have to keep that in mind. The odds are against you to get a bank loan for a commercial building. My husband works with people all the time. We just had someone recently that tried three different banks to get a business. It wasn't for this county. And they were denied from three different banks. So commercially, it's very hard to get loans. And then if you pass and you get it, then you've got all this work ahead of you to do everything. And I think it would be great for you guys just to embrace those people. And what can we do to make your business easier, you know, instead of saying, oh, you've got to have all this to do now too? Because personally, if that's what it was, I can honestly tell you, we probably would have moved outside of Rochester. You know? If it was already set in stone. But it would, I think it would just be a little bit discouraging, especially even if you're a brand new business. We've been established for a long time, so we kind of know how that can work. But if you're a brand new coming in and you don't realize how much investment there is as a new person, you know, until you get in it, and then you're like, whoa, what did I get into? So that's something, you know, kind of walk a mile in a business owner's shoes and see that kind of thing and take all of that in perspective. But I agree, there needs to be maybe somewhat of a level, common sense approach, but not be so restrictive. And I think some of those buildings that have the pink polka dots, those come and go. They don't usually stick around. So the ones that stick around are the ones that have more pride in their business. I agree with John, sometimes each business needs their own personality in their building too, that makes a statement about their business. So it's a tough decision that you're up against. I get that, but just wanted to voice out another side to everything.
That's a, that's a good point, so, good point. I should, I should make a comment though, but we mentioned Wabash and North Manchester. They have some hat shops with polka dots all over, but they're not on the main corridor. That makes a difference in their community. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to thank you for that story because that's been my life the last three and a half years. And yeah, I mean, there is a misconception, just because you own a business, people think you have money coming out of your ears. And I'm not one to look you in the eye and say, this is what you will do with your building. It's your building. I strongly believe in property rights. This is a first step in a long process. We have the infrastructure coming together with the partnership, the community involvement. And at the, at the end of the day, what we're looking at is bringing people into this downtown. If we bring people into this downtown, your businesses will thrive. Because the more traffic, foot traffic we have on those sidewalks, they're going to be going to the Evergreen. They're going to be, oh, you know, I need to come, I'm going to go to Baldwin Accounting to see what they're about. And that's the end goal. We want to, we want to make this community vibrant and make these businesses successful. And, you know, Steve, the reason it's pertaining to this area right now is because this is the historic designation that we have. This is the geographic area. So that's why it's pertaining to this ordinance, pertaining to this area. As far as other buildings, the moment they get to a certain level, that's when we can take action. And, you know, and we do. As a city, we don't want to be property owners, but we do have a lot of situations where the building becomes so in disrepair that we have to condemn it. And, you know, the county just condemns it and then we put it in our, in our asset column. We have to tear it down, whatever. We don't like being in that position. But that's why we're just talking about the downtown. So, I mean, the end goal is to bring everybody up, not just, you know, pull up our belt and say, this is what you will do right now in this, in this community. It's going to be a long road and we have to have that vision to the future. And, you know, three, three and a half short years, none of us may be here. I mean, you guys get to vote in three and a half years, so it will be interpretation. But, you know, we, we have a building code in place. It's not a very good one, so we're amending it. So just because it's in the books doesn't mean we can't go back and change it or someone else can't change it. I mean, they may look at it and what were these guys thinking? And then, you know, got it and changed it. So in my mind, the main intent of this is to build a vibrant downtown with thriving businesses. Not to, you know, just, hey, I don't like the way that looks, I want it to look like this. But this, this is a step. And there's been a lot of work behind the scenes in this. You know, we've been looking at those other communities, discussing with them what they've done. And, you know, they all have some form of this ordinance dictating what they want to see in their downtown to make it work together. I mean, everyone here is focused on their individual business. I get that. You guys, that's where you derive your income. That's how you pay your bills. So, you know, we're just trying to look at moving the community forward. And, you know, I would strongly urge you guys to, you know, step in on one of these downtown partnership meetings. I mean, you're the lifeblood of the downtown. You own all the buildings. So, you know, your involvement is key. And, you know, as I said, as a councilman, I don't, we don't want to shove anyone, anything down someone's throat, but personally, I think this is a good first step for us.
Yeah, and I guess I have a question. For like North Manchester and Wabash, the other communities that have this in place, do they have a, I guess if they've been denied a permit, do they have a place to go? Where do they typically go?
Wabash actually, their ordinance is very, very stringent. They actually created a historic preservation committee. And that historic preservation committee is, I'm not sure exactly of the exact steps as far as does it go to the building commission first and then the historic preservation commission. But either way, the historic preservation commission is the one that actually reviews all the site plans. They look at all the colors, they look at the windows, you know, the cornices, they look at, you know, the historic period, and they say yea or nay. And the appeal actually goes back to that commission.
Yeah.
And then I'm sure after that, if it's still denied, there's still, you know, a legal appellate process. But in their code, it's very, very stringent and it all goes to a historic preservation commission.
And I'm just thinking out loud, you know, because they have a committee and I'm sure that committee invests a lot of time into studying it. You know, you know what's historical, you know what's not. You know, I guess I'm just wondering out loud if we're the body who should be making that decision. Because, you know, I don't even get to pick out the paint color of our bathroom at our house. So, you know, are we that group? You know? Or, you know, because we don't make any other building decisions, we have a BZA, you know?
I think from Wabash's perspective, from what I understood, Amy Ruff, Fulton Chamber of Commerce. I'll get the process. So from what I understood, and I asked the gentleman the question today, because Casey, she put together a very eloquently spoken email about that commission. But from what I understood is he stated that the appeal went to the planning commission and then the planning commission then sent it to the city council. And then I believe from that, they moved it to the historic preservation commission. So it had a process. It started with going through the planning organization. He had to deal with all those. And then if he could not give the permit or whatever it was that they were asking for, then they would go to the city council. And if the city council felt it was over their head or that they didn't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole, then it moved to, you know, because they couldn't pick their own colors and, you know, they felt like they didn't understand what the questions that were being asked. They had this other separate group that was able to speak into that. That's from what I understand, speaking to the gentleman today in Wabash.
Yeah. And, you know, I think that I can see the other side of it, the city council being a good spot because it does represent the entire city. And the people on the council are elected by the citizens, whereas a BZA is appointed. You know, I do like that idea. I'm just, like I said, I was thinking out loud, you know, making this the best process we can if this is enacted.
Because you don't want it to be too prohibitory. That's what I've heard from some building owners and, you know, I get that. That's where I'm hesitant because I understand, you know, if the Rochester Downtown Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, FedCo, all these organizations that are partnering together are trying to bring business. But if there's something that's prohibited, making it prohibitory to move forward with that, or the process is too cumbersome, we don't want that either because then there's that, you know, issue with, they may not say that to us, but they're going to say to each other and they're going to tell their business owners not to come to Rochester, Indiana. That's what we don't want. But there's, I believe there has to be a process because there's got to be some structure.
Well, you know, and I know we're not downtown Charleston, South Carolina. We're not...
Hilton Head.
Hilton Head. We're not in New Orleans. You know, we don't want to be that restrictive. But I do think we should try to preserve the building's integrity, the structural integrity of the building. And, you know, like Brian and the mayor said, you know, it's a process and it's a first step in a process. And by no means are, do we think the seven of us have the greatest idea ever to do it. This is a living, breathing ordinance. Once it's passed, it can be amended. It can be changed depending on, you know, the outcry from, from the businesses or from how we see it actually in action. You know, it's not carved in a tablet to put away in a back room. You know, it is something that can be amended and can be changed. But I do believe we need something as a starting point, as you said.
Sarah, I'll let you make your comment.
Just to kind of comment on that is, I think that one of the important things that as our board has, has really understood the importance of, especially in the last year, is that we're a partnership. None of us can do this on our own. And as a partnership, we work closely with FedCo, with the redevelopment commission, with city council, with county officials, with a lot of different groups to make everybody as successful as possible. It's never our intention to make someone unable to move forward. And, you know, when you're talking about businesses, if we're really working with some places that are really taking that hard-earned money that they don't have as a business owner and putting it into a building and investing in it, we want to give them some sense of security that Joe Schmo's not going to come in next to them and grab the barn siding that fell off of his barn and throw it up on the building next to him just to cobble some, you know, and be this ice where that's now discouraging people from going into this business we worked so hard to establish. And so when it comes to those design guidelines and those, those businesses that are coming and then trying to create these beautiful buildings and giving them some security, I think there's benefit in partnering. And there's nothing wrong with seeking out, okay, downtown partnership, what are your design guidelines for your beside grant program? What are the guidelines that they have to follow to be able to receive that grant money? And how can we come alongside with you and work to be a team making the most good? So while yes, you may be the governing body that's giving the yea or nay stamp, that's not to say there aren't resources available that are going to help guide those decisions based on the money FedCo has, the money redevelopment commission may have, the money the downtown partnership may have, or these businesses coming in to offer them funding to help with those revitalizing efforts.
And one step farther, I would like to challenge the redevelopment committee and the downtown partnership folks and whoever is involved in any of these things to reach out to the building owners and try to get them involved in your specific groups. I've been amazed at how many groups we have and we don't have anybody involved with them who has skin in the game. Very few business owners are part of these groups. We need to reach out and make sure we do have a true partnership, people that are invested. Remember this, yes, yes.
Can I apologize? Do the best I can to speak. On what Sarah said... On what Sarah said, one of the things, too, we have a downtown plan. That we spent $40,000 in a grant. Well, it was a matching grant. But we spent money to have this downtown plan created, which, what Mason said... Pardon me?
You don't need to cry. You're getting emotional.
We needed that room, and this room was full. Everybody supported it. That plan involves this aesthetics, the brick. We are talking colors over the roof. And we are...
Basically, Shoda's trying to say... I said the downtown, in the downtown plan, it actually specifically took the building downtown, and it gave you pictorial references as far as this building could look like this. It could look like this.
I told you you were going to have to run out.
Yeah. And with that downtown plan, it came to the city council. The city council was asked to support it. The city council did overwhelmingly. The rooms were absolutely packed. But just like this ordinance where the council members keep talking about the fact it's a living, breathing ordinance, just like any city ordinance, this plan is also a living, breathing plan. I mean, it is written, but there were certain components that I didn't particularly care for or agree with. There were some that Shoda didn't. There were some I'm sure that a few of the council members didn't, and that all of you who looked at it didn't. But it doesn't negate the idea and the concepts behind the entire plan. The plan itself is a very solid structure, just like this type of ordinance is a very solid structure. But it can actually live and grow with the community, which I know with the conversation before, as far as what board should be, the appellate board, one of the things that came out was exactly what you said, Mark, which is, you know, the city council is, you know, they live and breathe and grow with the community because they are elected officials. So as far as knowing if your downtown has changed, if you start having a young and hip crowd and you start being, you know... I'm from Michigan, so I can't even state a... I'm hip in the downtown. Sorry. Fertile, sorry. Maybe from Michigan, you know what that is. But if the downtown starts to live and grow and change that way, then this body can also change their references as far as how, you know, they want to deal with the appellate procedure and with the ordinance and change it and make sure that it can grow with the community as the community grows. But it's just a stabilizing structure.
Great. Basically, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you, you guys. Secret people for me. Well, the other thing I have is two ways to... Two ways to view... We talk about restriction, but the other way to look at it is from economic growth. Some people who are looking at economics, look at this type of ordinance as they got teeth in the game. The city, the community cares about what my building looks like. So there's two ways to look at that from that perspective. And the other thing is, the $250 barrier that you brought up, that's actually not new. That's existing.
Yeah, actually, and I was going to state that, too. The last two subsections about the demolition and the buy-in, that's existing. That's in there. That's part of the existing code. And, you know, you're absolutely right. A lot of the companies that do come into Rochester, they want to know what are the attributes that the city has? You know, where are the parks? Where are... Do you have bike trails? You know, what kind of businesses do you have here? I couldn't tell you how many times I have commercial entities call me and say, "What other businesses do you have here? What do you have in your downtown? What can my employees do? How are the schools?" I mean, it is... It's more than just what kind of ordinances are on the book. And I'm not saying that that's not a factor. You're absolutely correct. I mean, if you had something that said, "Everything will be blue, everything will be this structure, everything will be this material," I wholeheartedly agree. I do believe that totally. But I also know, like what Shoda's saying, the flip side of how many businesses will call me and say, "They don't want to know about the business they're looking to buy." They want to know about what's around them. They want to know what's happened in the last... I've had somebody ask me, "What happened in the last five years in that block?" Oh, jeez, oldie. Well, you know, I've had people ask me, "How many permits were issued on this block or in this area?" They want to know how fast it's grown, how many businesses have come into the entire city. So all of these things are factors. So I would agree. I have heard that.
Well, and Mr. Baldwin, you come from Logan's Ford. You know, I've worked down there for nine years, and they have some pretty restrictive... Well, the color of the flowers you can have outside, you know, in some areas. I mean, that's not really where we want to go, you know? At least that's not, I guess, my intent. I guess I can't speak for everybody else, but...
I know. Well, Johnson, we wouldn't restrict the building we have. Your building at the top, you guys did some color at the top of that building at one point. Were you bothered?
Yes, yes.
And the top of the Rochester Center.
Maybe you have a permit right now.
The top of... That's as red. So we do have color where you can... We're not restricting that.
To what? To do the work he's doing right now. That's the ongoing practice.
Well, it's a proven to have other... I just keep thinking about this.
Because if he has a permit, this does not...
Other people have done this and it's been successful.
This is up for the fact.
You know, that's the... And I think, you know, we talked to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, and Ruth, I can't speak for... She's gone now.
She had to speak.
I can't speak for the historical granting organizations, but I can speak for, you know, some of the other granting. And we went for a grant, didn't receive it. But part of that is because what they're looking for is they're looking for folks who are going to make hard decisions. Every town that's been successful has actually made some hard decisions, and it's been hard decisions that have been a bit controversial. And what I appreciate about these gentlemen right here is that it's not... I wasn't sure what I was going to walk into today. But what I've been very appreciative of is it's a conversation, and I think that's what they're looking for. And when I spoke with Jennifer from Open, we've all spoke with her, is are we going to have a GPS coordinates? Is there going to be a governing body that says, "We have a plan, and now we're going to put teeth in the plan so we know." Not that it's going to be a perfect walk, like we said before. There's going to be some bumps in the road and some hard conversations, but at least we're doing something to move in a direction that's actually intentional. It's about intentionality. It's about having the plan. I see, since I've been here for six months, I've seen so many plans sitting on people's desks. I've been ready to move forward with them. I don't want anybody to suffer, but I do think that somebody... And I don't have the authority to be that intentional person. Can I speak about it? Can I hope for it? Can I be a part of it with the organizations that I run? Yes. But I think somebody's got to be intentional, but it's a partnership, like Sarah said, a conversation. And that's what I've appreciated, Ruth, and every person that's been sitting here. Everybody's been so respectful, and even the audience, to have a conversation collectively as to what intentionality are we going to move so we don't keep missing out on what other communities are moving forward. Everyone else is moving forward. Rochester keeps going around in circles. We have to have an intentional GPS coordinates, and it has to be a conversation. That's basically what I see.
Okay. If there's no other... One more.
If I... Just another perspective to throw out there, if I take off that RDP hat. As a former business but not building owner, this would give me more confidence as a potential business or renting space from someone. I had a building that every time we got a hard rain, I had a bucket in my kitchen because my roof was leaking, and there was nothing that my building owner was willing to do. I was fortunate to be in his building that the sides of it weren't falling apart and the facade wasn't falling apart. But there was nothing to kind of make that happen to protect me as a business owner, to present a business that looks professional and encourages people to come into. So as a potential business owner that is leasing space, this type of ordinance would give me more confidence to rent from someone, knowing that there's something in place to hold them to a standard of repair.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, then I would ask comments from the council, a motion of some nature.
I guess just in my comments, I've been a proponent of this for quite some time, you know, having some standard. The last thing I want to do as an elected official is to not have something in place where something can come in that would destroy the downtown aesthetics, where we have no option. At least at this point, we have a plan, and, you know, we can at least review what's coming in to protect the downtown today, tomorrow, and 20 years down the road. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
I would agree with Mark. The only other thing I would add is to kind of echo what Amy said. I'd really appreciate the fact that so many people came to take the time tonight to come and talk to us and to voice your opinion and do it so well and respectively. That's very nice. And we don't always get people at a council meeting, so it's nice to have the input, to seriously... Well, I mean, good or bad, we need to know people's opinions as we move forward through things. So I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Well said. Any other comments to be made, council members?
Well, we do need a third reading of the...
I need a motion.
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and have the third reading of ordinance number 3-2016 by title only.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we read the motion by title, or the ordinance by title only. Those in favor? So moved? Okay.
Ordinance number 03-2016, an ordinance amending portions of the building code concerning workmanship.
I would entertain a motion in reference to 03-2016.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 03-2016.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed?
Again, Ted, I'm going to abstain due to the fact that I have a building in that corridor, and I don't want any thoughts of my voting.
You're abstaining.
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Okay. It's 6-4 and one abstention. I would make this note. I mentioned a while ago about building owners being involved in some of these committees and such. My opinion, this is a good review group right here. We have two building owners sitting right here with this group. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We're in adjournment. Thank you all.